Thank you, everyone, for being here. Matt and I have a couple of amendments to the agenda. We're adding two items under business. F is special meeting regarding the charter amendment. And H is an update on our boiler for City Hall. Did anybody have any other issues to raise? Sorry, Lynn, we started.
That's okay.
All right, moving forward. I wanted to say to everyone that we have made some adjustment to the agenda, as you may have noticed, and we are moving citizens' comments to the very end of the agenda so that issues that we may discuss may spur some conversation and will give people an opportunity to speak at the end of the meeting. Other than that, I would like to introduce Steve Luna, who is here representing a challenge that I have joined, which is the Mayor's Challenge to End Veterans Homelessness. The floor is yours, sir.
All right. Real quick, so David Tilly, who is the New England Administrator for HUD, expected to be here tonight, but unfortunately, he was held up this afternoon at his office in Manchester, New Hampshire, so he moved off. But I wanted to come and thank Mayor Fritz and the City of Virgens for joining in on the Mayor's Challenge. First of all, the job that I hold that pays the bills is supportive services for veteran families at the University of Vermont. We are a VA-funded grant that helps house homeless veterans and their families. Additionally, I serve as the chairperson of this organization right here, Vermont Veterans Committee on Homelessness, which is comprised of veteran service organizations across the state. So it is, any organization that serves veterans has a seat on our committee for homelessness. I just wanted to give you an update on some of the successes that we've seen over the last few months. If, this is just a two-pager, four slides. The first one compares 129-19 to 923-19. 129 was the annual point in time count. It is a 24-hour period that HUD declares that we go out into the community and actually physically count the homeless. That has been going on for a number of years throughout the state of Vermont. And as you can see here, the numbers, we have it split out with Chittenden County on the top, which is CCHA, and then VECH is Vermont Coalition to End Homelessness. And that is the portion of the state that Addison County belongs to. It's called the Balance of State. So it's all the counties, with the exception of Chittenden, they are their own continuum of care. So as you can see, for VCEH, we had a total of 70 homeless veterans on 123, yes, on 123-19. In September, we had a total of 53. So we are making some progress in getting veterans housed. There's a whole process in place that quickly is set up to quickly identify them, assess them, get them referred to the resources that would best suit their needs, and then get them housed. Ideally, we'd like to have them housed within 90 days. But there are a number of challenges that we face in meeting that requirement. The next slide just gives you a breakdown of the number of homeless veterans within each county. I know it's kind of small. Looks much better on the screen. And if you look at Addison, on 123 of 2019, there were two, what we call homeless veterans, literally homeless, meaning they were living on the street, living in a car, living somewhere that was not meant for human habitation.
I think what's, I can't believe Washington County will explain that to us.
So some of you may have heard of the Veterans Place. It is a homeless house in Northfield that is VA-funded. It's called a GPD grant per diem. It's transitional housing. So under the HUD definition of homeless, those veterans that are in transitional housing are counted as homeless while they're in the transitional phase. And it just so happens, the Vet's Place has 26 vets.
There you go. Okay.
So that. And if you look at the other one, Orange County has 16. There is a transitional housing facility in Bradford, which has 16 vets.
Thank you.
Sure.
Simple explanation.
Yes.
Steve, how long do, how long does a homeless vet stay at transitional housing?
They're contracted to be in what's called service-intensive transitional housing for up to two years. And the plan is that when they come into it, the case managers within the facility are supposed to work with that veteran, meeting their needs, whether it's substance abuse, mental health issues, work with them to get the help they need, work with them on regular life skills, how to run a checkbook, how to manage, you know, their income. So that is what the transitional housing team is supposed to do. And at the end of two years, if everything works the way it's supposed to, that veteran is supposed to go out into the community into permanent housing. Now, obviously, if, you know, they don't meet all of the criteria at the end of two years, that two-year period can be extended. So.
Great.
If you flip it open, just talk about some of the successes that we've achieved in the year or so that I've been the chairperson. So about a year ago, both Continuum of Care, Chittenden County and the Balance of State, started a process that was mandated by HUD, which is called coordinated entry. And it's a process in which any homeless person can show up at any location, and they are quickly referred to an assessment partner or a lead agency to be assessed, evaluated, and put into the system so that they are processed relatively quickly and, again, try to meet that 90-day period of housing them. So because the Veterans Committee serves the entire state, we had to create policies that fit within each of those continuums, the Balance of State and Chittenden County, to match their coordinated entry policies. So it was quite undertaking. We spent a lot of times, a lot of time working on drafts and approving drafts and passing it around for everybody to look at. I think at last count, for Chittenden County, we ended up with close to 20 drafts before it was approved. But now, we have a policy that nests nicely in with the policy that Chittenden County has for the veterans, as well as the Balance of State. So it should be a smooth transition for any veteran to present themselves at any of the locations, any place in the state, be identified as a veteran, be put into the system, and then we will work to get them housed relatively quickly, as quickly as we can. We created a position called the Veterans Committee Representative. This person manages our by-name list. It's abbreviated as ABGT. That's just Federal Benchmark General Tool, which USICH has put out for us to use as a tool to help identify, help track those veterans that come up on our list as homeless. We also developed case conferencing procedures to implement case conferencing calls for both COCs. We take the names off the by-name list, and we, over the phone, go over the process and all the resources available for any particular veteran to make sure that they are getting everything they need as quickly as they need it. And then we work closely with both point-in-time committees to streamline the veterans' ID process. So many people are unaware that there are very specific requirements to be granted veteran status. And one of the things that a lot of people don't understand is that if you are a traditional National Guardsman or a traditional reservist, meaning that all you have done is gone to basic training in AIT, and you come back and you do your traditional one-weekend-a-month, two-week annual training, and you've never been activated in any way to go to war, whatever the case may be, you do not, you are not granted veteran status. So that's a misconception. And in previous years, the PIT count just asked, "Have you ever served?" And so for many National Guardsmen, traditional National Guardsmen and reservists, "Yeah, I put the uniform on, I served." And so our numbers tended to be a little inflated. So we had to work closely with the PIT committees to change the mindset of the people asking the question, to really get down to who is a veteran and who isn't a veteran. So those are some of the things that we've accomplished, in addition to dropping the numbers a little bit, which I think is significant of mentioning again. Some of our challenges, consistency with data entry. So this by-name list is a massive Excel spreadsheet, and there's a ton of information that needs to be put in. And we really rely on all of our partners to fill that information in so that we have the most current, up-to-date data. And like anything, change is sometimes difficult for people. And so some of our partners are having a difficult time really grasping how important the data is to move it forward with our process. Providers' participation in HMIS. HMIS is the Homeless Management Information System. It's a computer-generated system that allows us to quickly access information on who is homeless at any given time. And providers' participation in HMIS, right now, most of our providers are in HMIS. However, one of our significant federal partners is not, and it kind of slows the process down. GPDs, as I said, transitional housing. There are 63 beds throughout the state of Vermont. And right now, 53% of our homeless veterans are in transitional housing. So as it stands right now, we have a fairly high tendency to use transitional housing. That could be part and parcel because of the limitation of housing stock. We may be putting veterans into transitional housing because we just can't find them housing anywhere else. So that may be part of the reason that we have such high numbers there. Number five, housing availability. Throughout the state, I think it varies between 1% and 2% availability. So finding a veteran housing anywhere in the state is difficult because of the, just the unavailable access to good housing anywhere, anywhere in the state. Veterans' choice. So we all work on a guiding principle that is veterans' choice. The veteran has a say. So if a veteran wants to live in Panton, and there's probably not a lot of housing stock in Panton, but we're going to do our best to try to get them housed in Panton. Obviously, if they want to live in Middlebury, or Virgens, or Chittenden County, probably more housing stock, but, you know, it's still, it takes some effort to find them the housing. So veterans' choice is something that guides us, but it also creates a challenge for us. We had one veteran who wanted to live in Burlington. He had six dogs. So, you know, it adds, it adds a certain level of challenge to the folks that are doing the housing search, to find an apartment in Burlington that will take six dogs. And then level of care that veterans need. We're finding, as time goes on, the service-intensive needs of veterans is increasing. We're dealing with many more veterans that have mental health issues, substance abuse issues, a combination of both. They're aging, some, a lot of the veterans that we're dealing with now are an aging population. So we're having to provide a lot more services after the fact. We get them housed, we get them into a decent apartment, but there are still services that are needed because of some of the challenges that go along with it. So just to kind of wrap this all up, and I'll turn it back over to the mayor. The Mayor's Challenge has been around for a number of years. I think it started under George W. Bush, the second Bush in the presidency. Then Michelle Obama took up the charge of the Mayor's Challenge and worked with it for a while, and then it kind of went dormant for a number of years. And just recently, within the last year or so, it's kind of been brought to the forefront again, and it's an opportunity for cities and mayors to really get behind this idea of ending veterans homelessness and really get the word out to the constituents in the area, landlords, folks that deal with veterans, the police chiefs around the state, around the country, because they're probably, the police probably have a much better idea of where they are, who they are, and what help they need. So we're trying to get the word out. Mayor Fritz was kind enough to join the effort, and we are super happy. As I said, David Tilly wanted to be here to express his thanks for the City of Virgens and Mayor Fritz for joining the Mayor's Challenge, but unfortunately, he couldn't make it. But are there any questions? I've got some flyers here. If you don't mind, I'm trying not to take too much time. You can make copies of these. I have PDF versions. Let me see here. These are just tear-offs. These are to the program that pays my bills, the SSVF program. You've probably seen them around. Yeah, we did.
We have them posted.
Perfect. And then these are our brochures. That kind of outlines our program. Pass it around. While we serve all veterans, so if they are eligible for HUD-BASH, which is a VA program, or they are eligible for Transitional Housing, GPD, which is a VA program, or one of the two SSVF programs throughout the state, the entry is more or less through our program, SSVF at UVM. We will do an online intake questionnaire with the veteran. If they meet the requirements, we'll have them do an assessment, and then that assessment will determine which resources best serve their needs. So we may, we may see a veteran that is definitely a HUD-BASH candidate. We will turn them right over to our contacts in the VA to handle.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here. As Steve said, I have endorsed this project, and many cities across the nation have, their councils have taken a position to also endorse it. And I would hope that this council would support a resolution to endorse the program, and if so, we can introduce that at our next meeting, unless anyone openly objects to that. We'll take that on. Great. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Moving on to the minutes and the warrant. Did anyone have any questions on the warrant?
I'll make the motion for approval.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Additions, corrections, amendments? Go right ahead.
Page two, Savita, second paragraph, second line, have postponed their decision, as opposed to postponed. And then same line, I think I should say, holding a deliberative session tomorrow as opposed to deliberation session.
Right.
Is this all under Savita?
Yep. Same line.
Same line.
Just two easy ones. That's it.
Those were the two that I had. Any others? All those in favor of the minutes as corrected, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Minutes are approved. Moving on to business. DPW budget review. Everyone received a copy of the city manager's proposal?
I wouldn't call it a proposal, Mr. Mayor.
Assessment?
It's a working draft.
That's better.
So the song's kind of the same, folks. We're seeing upticks in healthcare, 12%, those going to be cared across the board. We are continuing to do our healthcare benefit analysis. I've just got one, one last plan that I'm waiting to come in, and then we'll be bringing something to the council for discussion as to how we want to tackle that beast. You know, it's, the issues that we're facing are consistent with every other municipality and the state, and companies across the nation are trying to figure out the health insurance issue. I don't have those answers, unfortunately. You know, so there's not a lot of change here over LY. It's a 4% increase. In speaking and reviewing the, with Jim, you know, the one opportunity that he feels that there is to save money, kind of tongue-in-cheek, is to not do sidewalks. Our charter actually requires residents to maintain the sidewalks adjacent to their properties. It strikes me as being difficult to enforce. But we do spend a lot of time and energy and resources on our, you know, 25 miles of sidewalk. We didn't really find a lot of other opportunities for potential reductions. Jim would also like it known that he, the team could benefit from a used excavator at some point. What we've done, what Jim has done, it's not even we, has really been a great team effort in internalizing work as much as possible. An example is the potential walking path that we just reviewed. A concrete example is that, literally concrete, no pun intended, the team replaced over 660 feet of sidewalk this season by themselves. If that work had been contracted out, it would have been over $33,000. And as you know, we have about $15,000 a year allocated to sidewalk. The team has really gotten it down so that they're proficient. I think we're getting a good and consistent product. But that's an example of, you know, how we feel we can not spend more money but still accomplish our common goals. Similar to, you know, an excavator at some point, as on Jim's wish list, you know, we could be doing our own culvert work and not having to contract that out. We do have the skill and the ability, the training, to be able to do so. That's a $60,000 to $80,000 buy on a used excavator. So Jim would just like it known that if we have an extra $80,000 laying around, he wouldn't mind doing that.
So that's different than the 30?
That is, it's not, it's nowhere on this budget. I cannot, in any way, shape, or form, figure out how to incorporate that. The 30,000, the 34,000 for this upcoming year, Lynn, is the new Kenworth dump truck, and I think we have one year left on the Kubota Ventrac.
Got it. So the 30,000 in Budget 2020 is the Ventrac?
Combined.
And 21 is the other one?
2020, the 2020 budget bill, there was a $30,000 down payment on the dump truck.
Okay.
And the payments on the Kubota were ongoing, and now we've just combined them into one line item for 2021.
Okay.
Great. But again, the drivers, you know, the driver here, plus 29,000 is health insurance.
First, and we know we talked about salt and snow plowing. Is that coming under the winter maintenance materials?
It is.
And just, you know, from here in the past year or so, you know, are we, this 50,000, that's been, we've been pretty much at that number? I do remember this past winter, you know, was a rough one, and we were spending a lot. Do we come in pretty close to 50 or over?
No, we're well over that by 10,000 or 12,000.
So, okay. So does it, does it make sense to be increasing? I mean, I guess that's, that's why I'm looking at the line, just saying, like, you know, I heard a lot about going over that.
Yep.
So does it, and I understand, just trying to keep it as tight as possible, but that's something that I'm thinking, like, gee, we should be accounting for that, just looking forward.
Yeah, you know, I think the 50,000, David, is a good median. You know, I think it's, we could just as easily come in 10,000 under that on a, you know, it just seems to be the one line item that, you know, sometimes we're up and sometimes we're down. You know, it's really dependent on the winter. Jim and I have decided we've given up on looking at the Farmer's Almanac and praying. You know, it's supposed to be a colder winter with less precipitation, you know, so we could hope to come in under there. But that's really, I think the 50,000 is a good median.
I have one question, Matt. The $100,000 for highway improvements?
Yes.
How specific is that in terms of project and individual project budgets? Or is, if you go 10,000 over in materials, is that a place that you might be able to back off a little bit? Or I guess, what does that include?
Well, I disclosed, or I brought to the council before the fact that, you know, I thought we'd save money on that line item next year, particularly where Main Street is being redone by VTrans. Jim already had six paving projects lined up that were actually supposed to be done this season, but because of the late spring, it's gone into the fall. The list escapes me off the top of my head, but it's like the, it's paving that has not been done, to Jim's recollection, in the 26 years he's been on DPW.
So it needs to be done.
Yeah, it does. And, you know, I think we'll be more mindful of our vendor. We know, we got bit at the Booth Woods project where they had miscalculated the amount of blacktop that was going to be required for that project. So, you know, we just, we know we need to be more diligent with our vendor there.
Any other question? Great. Thank you for the work.
Sure.
And next meeting, we will tackle which department?
Well, we have general expenses, which is not a huge, not big enough, but after that, we would be discussing the police department. So we could probably lump those two into, into one.
Okay. Does that sound agreeable to everyone? Great. Perfect. The Vermont State Revolving Loan Fund.
Okay, so this, again, is, what we're doing today, what I'm asking for today is for us to execute the documents on a decision that was previously approved by the council. This has been kind of dragging out because we've been working with the Agency of Natural Resources to determine what was the best funding source for determining the issues with the McDonough pump station. The two options were a state revolving loan fund or a grant. Ultimately, the decision was made that a grant was going to lock us into a finite amount of money. And this study is an ever-changing initiative, and I'll bring it to speed as to where we are in a second. So what we're asking for, what I'm asking for is the council to execute these loan documents. A $125,899 is forgiven. It's completely, the state revolving loan takes care of that. Leaves us a balance of $25,717. That balance, although not due until, until five years from now, will actually be rolled into the larger bond initiative that we know we will be facing, either on the McDonough pump station or on the wastewater treatment plant. And again, this is kind of the guidance from Tom Brown at A&amp;R. So we don't actually anticipate needing to be able to start paying on, on that 25,000 in that five-year period. It's going to get rolled into a larger initiative. Now, as I said, the reason that we elected to go after the revolving loan fund is that we do have the ability to amend the loan amount. So we want to execute a comprehensive smoke testing of the entire city of Virgens. It's five days. Rick and Victor would work in hand-in-hand with our DPW team, and we would be doing this work, again, internally. The lowest-priced contractor that we could find to execute the smoke testing was $80,000. That's what I said, Lynn. We are going to purchase through an amended loan, the unit ourselves. It's under $2,000 for the unit. And then we're going to internalize the work. And, you know, so we will be able to expense off an amended loan, the equipment, any labor that is used internally. There's been discussion about desiring aerial footage because there's some speculation that a fair amount of our issue are flat-roof storm drains that may be going into our system. And an aerial view via drone might be the best way to capture that as we're going, you know, through the downtown. That, I think, is where I'm at on this.
When would this happen?
The smoke testing? Our intention, Bill, is to get that done this season.
Really?
You know, we feel, you know, I'll give you an example of yesterday. We went from an average of 350,000 gallons of water to over a million in a 12-hour period. It's stormwater. You know, it's not, everyone decided to take three-hour showers yesterday afternoon. And as I said to Lynn earlier, you know, our McDonough pump station ran at about 10.01%, you know, for 24 hours, and it just wasn't able to just stay above the crest. Consequently, we had a discharge of 12,600 gallons yesterday. If we can get the stormwater, again, so you go from 350 to over a million gallons, 750,000 gallons, if we can get that away from the McDonough pump station, what's the issue at the McDonough pump station? Right? It may not, it may need an upgrade, but it probably does not need a $3 million fix. Okay? So, you know, I'm looking for the silver bullet. It has not availed itself to me yet. But, you know, it seems, it seems very evident that we have an infiltration problem, and the best way to determine where that's coming from is this smoke testing. And, you know, kudos to Rick for taking this on. You know, he didn't want to spend, see the city You know, he didn't want to spend, see the city spend $80,000 to have another firm take this on where we can do it ourselves for five.
Can we run ourselves out to Newman's Palates for $40,000? Once we have the bid.
I can't believe you said that on camera because I hope Rick's not watching tonight because he'll sell at a premium.
Sideline.
You know, so, you know, the other thing is, you know, we, again, equipment, you know, we would, we will be pursuing purchasing a camera so that we can review our own lines and not have to pay. And we know we have an issue. It's an ongoing issue. It's going to be, but again, if we can get a camera and it's going to be covered under this loan, that'll be floated into a larger bond initiative in the future. And again, we just stop spending money on vendors where we can internalize this. And again, it's kind of at a high level, my objective in moving the collection system away from DPW and into wastewater, which we executed that during the 2020 budgets.
Wouldn't it be great if, you know, there was really nothing to roll it into because you found the problem and it was a silver bullet?
It would be great to just get this done, Bill, and hop across the river and start looking at the treatment plant where we know, again, it's coming, it's coming on its due, it's coming due. So, so again, so I'm asking the council, please execute the general obligation note, which was included in your packet, and then the resolution and certificate of general obligation. So that's Exhibit D. And here is Exhibit C. Any questions about any of that?
Let's make a comment, maybe Mark does more. When I was on the school board, all of the high school was going into the sewer then, and that was before the addition. So I don't know if he knows where it's going now.
I know that the stormwater is going off into that holding area that we've been talking about, kind of upgrade, so I don't think that's going anywhere.
I've popped the parking lot there.
Okay. Maybe they changed.
Great. Anything else on that item?
Unless anybody has any comments.
Anyone have any questions? We're going to keep clicking along. Alderman Koenig has to leave at about 6:15, so if everyone doesn't mind, just so we don't miss this item before he leaves, I'd like to jump ahead to Item F, which is a special meeting regarding the charter amendment. This, of course, time is of the essence, and if we intend to proceed with the charter amendment, we need to get clicking on it. And Alderman Koenig has spent a great deal of time working on an amendment to our charter, and I think it deserves, albeit potentially brief meeting, it deserves its own meeting and discussion. And we should do that within the next two weeks, if at all possible. So I'm wondering if everyone is available one week from tonight?
It's the 15th?
15th.
What time?
We can do it at 5:30. If that works for everyone.
Okay.
Great. Perfect. Thank you, everyone. We'll jump back now to...
And that'll be the only purpose, is to work on the charter?
On the charter amendment.
That makes you responsible.
Moving ahead to discussion on sewer rates. I'd like to preface this conversation by saying, as much as I think we need to jump on this as soon as possible, we would have to make a decision tonight on the sewer rates in order for it to affect the next billing cycle, which I don't think is at all appropriate, particularly since we're looking at potentially a significant increase. And therefore, I think that we should consider making a rate adjustment at the next cycle. So we would be making that decision at our first meeting in January. Is that correct?
I think we want to try to provide as much warning to our residents as we can, Mr. Mayor, so I wouldn't put it that far down the road. It may be on the November agenda, particularly for discussing a larger percentage increase.
So that the rate increase would take effect in January?
In January.
We wouldn't want to do our public relations
Right.
two months ahead of time or start the, yeah, makes sense.
Start the discussion.
And do we have a ballpark number that we're thinking about here? I hope it wasn't 150.
Well, it still is, and the city manager's going to tell you some parts of that. We know that we're going to need $200,000 next year to pump the lagoons. And that increase, that 150 increase is $223,000. So that would be, right, that would be a contribution to our capital account of $23,000. Matt has also done some research into what potential bond payments would look like. Should we find ourselves in the position of needing to borrow $3 million to update the McDonough pump station, which hopefully we won't, that amounts to about $144,000 a year in bond payments, which keeps that 150 number really sort of in line.
Or it would let you do at the main plant, 6 million, or 5 or 6 million, be able to be able to take care of that bond.
At a high level, Bill, you know, my thought process is to try to get money into a capital improvement fund so that when we do finally determine where the need is, be it McDonough or the wastewater treatment plant, that we have a financial contribution and we're not having to borrow 25 million. You know, if we had come in with whatever it is, anything that's going to take the principal down would be the objective there. And, you know, as Mayor Fritz said, you know, I need $200,000 next year just to drain the lagoons. So I think, you know, these are things that we should, I would encourage us to keep in mind as we come into, you know, the November discussion regarding rates.
Any other comments or questions?
I think we're thinking about doing a full review of the water treatment plant within the next couple of years. Is it worth draining the lagoons right now if that's not going to be part of the system in the near future? Or is it so far along?
I don't think it's that close, Merk, honestly. I started the process on the review of engineering on the McDonough pump station in September of last year, and we're just kind of getting traction there. So my guess is, you know, it's probably five years or better before we even get to the point where we're knowing what we want to do on the other side.
So we'll just somehow roll this into the economic order.
There are places to roll things, which is a very good point to make. And in any case, even if, even if we got rolling on a new sewer plant, we still have to operate this one while we construct a new one.
Right, I just wasn't sure if it was desperate.
And the lagoons are full.
Yeah.
So it needs to be addressed. So we'll bring this back.
Next month.
Correct.
Great. Moving right along. 2019 grand list correction, listeners' reports.
Joan?
It was brought to my attention by an accountant for this family that his assessment should have been reduced in 2017 grand list, which did not occur. So it has remained the same, 17, 18, and 19. So to amend this year's grand list, the city council would have to approve that change, which is just one step by itself, is amending the grand list. And I supplied the documentation showing it was clear intention that the assessment need dropped to 190,700, and both bills show it did not get dropped.
So what we're doing is supporting the errors and omissions correction for 2019?
Yes.
And then we're abating the two prior years?
Well, yep.
That's just, I'm trying to get it?
Yep, that's what you're going to do next, is then the man is applying for an abatement of taxes for 17 and 18, which amounts to a refund of $390 for 217 and $393.15 for 2018. When I correct the 219 grand list, it'll create a revised tax bill, so he won't overpay this year.
So you're looking for a motion?
Yes.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I'll just say, I'm not going to vote on it because I sold them the house. Okay?
Great, thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. So is that motion granting both?
Well, it...
Or just the grand list correction?
I think probably because we've got separate agenda items. Let's do the E and O correction first.
Okay.
And I'll also make the motion for the abatement.
Okay.
Because it looks, you had plenty of proof in the package to support it.
Correct. Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion on this motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Which brings us to our boiler.
Yes, so when everyone came in, on your desks, we have the revised boiler replacement cost from Tim Ryan. So I had come to the council in June, and we thought we were, the original projection from Ryan's Plumbing and Heating was $30,000. In getting into the building, one of the largest issues was finding a clear path for ventilation. We thought that we had a chase that we were going to be able to utilize. That's not going to be the case, so there's just additional expense. The good news about this is that the expense is split between us and the Friends of the Vergens Opera House, so, you know, we're not on the hook for $57,000 ourselves. The council had approved the boiler replacement to come out of the water tower fund, and I'm hopeful that the council will continue to support this project going forward, even though the price tag has jumped precipitously.
So this is converting from oil to natural gas?
That is correct.
And do you have any estimated savings?
I don't at this time. So one of the things, Bill, is that we have a MOU with the Friends of the Vergens Opera House where we buy the first gallonage for oil, and then they pay the balance. One of the aspects that we'll be putting into place here is that we will be putting in a meter to determine where the usage is, what's happening down here in administration and the common area and Vergens Partnership, and then what's being spent upstairs. It's going to take us a year. Jeriann and I have been reviewing this, and they're having conversations with their executive board and their board. I think that they may request some assistance from the city in how they may finance their portion, but I don't have the details of the conversation yet. I wanted to get this in front of the council and get the, an understanding as to whether or not you feel this project can go forward.
How old is the existing boiler?
Old.
Old as dirt.
It is.
It's just ancient.
I didn't remember.
It's a beast down there.
Okay, that's, never mind.
So essentially, this is an extra $10,000 you're asking from the city?
That is correct.
Give or take. So it's about $50,000 now, split two ways.
Yep.
It was $30,000, split two ways.
Correct.
I will ask my question.
Sure, please.
Was there any other bidders in this?
I did not look to another bidder. I certainly could bring somebody else in. You know, it's one of these things, the cities have a long standing relationship.
Oh, I know, Ryan's a great, I know, but it is the city.
He was in a couple weeks ago and told me he was off schedule and wasn't sure he was going to get it done. And I almost went looking for another bidder at that time. He did come in on Monday and bring me the revised estimate.
Does anyone else feel strongly that we should seek another bid? That's a valid question.
It is, certainly.
I mean, it is doing your due diligence for the taxpayer.
I know, that's the thing. That's our job.
You can run a five, Jack McPhill, and see if they...
Well, Jack McInnes, yeah, Bristol.
Yeah, I just, anyway, just kind of show them this bid and say, is this, are you in the, is this the ballpark before they, yeah, that's probably give or take. Or if they say, oh, that's way off, then they can run a good one. Doesn't hurt.
Yep.
Yeah, it keeps everybody on it.
Okay, fair enough.
Okay. We'll address that again at the next meeting.
Correct.
Great, perfect.
Sorry.
No.
Not at all.
Moving on to the city manager's report.
Thank you. Vergens Police Department union negotiations will start this Thursday at 1:00 PM here. Both sides will be handling the negotiations under a confidentiality agreement. Both sides will be agreeing to not speak to members of the public nor the press until such time that we get to mediation. As information becomes available, I will be bringing it to the council in executive session, anything that is pertinent or requires a larger set of eyes.
And who's going to be on the negotiating part for us?
Currently, it's myself and Peter Garin. Peter has extensive union experience on both sides of the table. And this is not something, Lynn, that I have direct experience in, and we don't want someone who's naive to the process working on, under his best intention. That's what I can put that.
Any other question?
As previously discussed, on the 23rd through the 25th, the State of Vermont will be going through a statewide Category 4 exercise. This is kind of similar to what we experienced with Tropical Storm Irene. And I bring it to, back to the council's attention and to the public that may be watching, you know, we may see, you know, State of Vermont hazmat teams here. We may see an increase, an uptick in Green Mountain Power vehicles going through. There's going to be an uptick in activity. Specific for Vergens, our portion of the drill is that some barrels of unknown origin and material wash up in the basin.
Happens every year.
Right, exactly. You know, so that's where we might see a hazmat team down in the basin, and I will, you know, put a notice out on Front Porch Forum prior to the event so that everyone's aware. But, you know, it's just, it's, I think this is great. You know, the state really has applied the learnings post-Irene and trying to get best practices in place.
So is the fire department part of this drill?
Yep, Jim is aware. We, our emergency operations center actually operates out of the fire department because that's where the generator is, and Jim is dialed into all of this as well.
I'm happy now to meet the run, sorry for leaving me before we're gone, but if anybody wants to come down to the school and...
Good luck. Good luck, this is over.
You guys somewhere better to be?
Better is not the word I use. Thank you.
Thank you, Merk.
Great.
On October 29th at 6:30 right here, we will be holding a V-Trans 2020 paving public Q and A. The first meeting is really directed towards our downtown merchants and what we're going to do to help mitigate the impact of the 2020 paving project. We will have a representative from V-Trans here, Vergens Partnership will be here. What we don't have and will not have until spring is a schedule, and I think that's what everybody is looking for above and beyond.
Will it be in this room or upstairs?
We're going to be here.
In this room?
Yeah, because there's a previously scheduled event upstairs. But we'll knock down the tables, we'll put in some seating, and V-Trans is bringing a projector and screen for some. So again, it's really, it's more of a, we'll take your questions and we'll try to get back to you with the answers if we don't have them at this time. That's on everyone's radar.
I think Middlebury could help us with all that, too. They've been suffering through it for a while.
Seems like they should have learned something that they could teach us.
Yeah, and they're doing really well down there, so.
Yep, yep. One of the, one of the questions has been, you know, can we get marketing money from V-Trans like Middlebury did? Because that's all grant-funded, there isn't, V-Trans isn't coughing up marketing money for us. So we're really, again, working closely with Vergens Partnership to find out how we can get the word out and mitigate the impact.
And we'll be doing this live on our...
Yep. Local Hazard Mitigation Plan Grant. So we have an opportunity, just want to give you a visual aid first. So this is the Town of Orwell's Hazard Mitigation Plan, 64 pages. It is extremely comprehensive, and it covers everything from flooding to... It is extremely comprehensive, and it covers everything from flooding to wind damage to snow and ice events, road inventory, river, brook inventory. We have nothing like this. We have a basic LEMP, which is our emergency management plan, that basically just lists our contacts and where our vulnerable populations rest. It is strongly advised that all communities do have a hazard mitigation plan. There is a grant opportunity available to us that $10,612 would be awarded from FEMA, that's 75%. $35,375 would be the local match, $3,537.50, at 25%. The good news for our portion is that our, there is an in-kind match available, so that if we found, you know, local residents, or if we were tapping into the DPW team, or working with George and our police officers on hazard mitigation planning, you know, that can be in-kind, that can go towards our $35,37. I don't know that it's going to cover all of it. So I guess what I'm asking for is, is, does the council feel that this is a worthwhile endeavor for us to undertake? And if I can't hit the $3,700 in-kind match, you know, would we be able to, you know, come up with, you know, $1,500, $1,700?
Who created that for Orwell?
This was done by the city, and there's, it actually maps it out pretty well, or the town, rather, of Orwell. There's a lot of, there's a lot of process up front, Bill, there's a lot of public information and feedback. There are individuals out there that, that do the work. They do all the laid work, they orchestrate the meetings, they pull together the inventory. I don't have those resources yet, because I haven't, you know, gotten approval from the council. I didn't want to go too far down.
But it's probably like, there's a template, kind of like zoning by law, where, you know, the structure, you just need to kind of make it specific to your community and...
That's correct.
Yeah. I mean, it's a good idea. We don't have anything. We probably should, and even if we do have to pay a little bit, then that's probably not a bad investment.
I think if you don't have one of those, you don't qualify for FEMA assistance.
There, we have the short form, which is done, and that does qualify us, the LEMP.
Okay.
Yeah, so we made sure to make sure we've executed that. This is just a much more comprehensive, and, you know, I suspect that there are other potential ramifications, positive ramifications of having the plan in place should we have an unfortunate event here in the city.
Seems like one of those things where you don't want to be in hindsight and say, man, wish we had that document.
Correct.
One of those liquefied natural gas trucks tipping over.
Yeah, that's my, that's my nightmare.
Mine, too.
You know, particularly if FEMA's going to give us $10,600.
Yeah.
It's an upper...
We can do most of it in kind.
Our portion, I believe we can, yes.
I think we tripper so well.
Sure. Okay.
Great.
Thank you all very much. Budget update. I don't really have much to add. Everything looks to be tracking, that's not the right one, sorry. You know, most departments running at about 25% of total year-to-date, which is about where we want to be. Lot of conversation in the office about, you know, fees. You know, I think Mayor Fritz had sent me an article, you know, that smaller municipalities are trying to kind of fee their way out of budget issues, and I'm not certain that our fee structure, particularly when it comes to zoning, is as aggressive as some of our neighboring communities are. So, you know, we're looking for, you know, revenue and where it makes sense without, you know, just having another set of fees and fees and fees. You know, but we may be, we may be underutilizing that as a, as a revenue source. You know, you know, police fines, we're still, I'm hearing that June is coming, I'm hearing we're going to get our money from June, you know...
July, August.
Yeah, and so, you know, so, you know, we're just, it's, it's due to no reflection on our team, that we're just, we're not moving the mark there. They're, they're doing a great job, but we're just not getting the money back from the state. So again, revenues, at about 90% of our budget, administration in total, running 25.6%. Police department, 25.94%, and DPW's bringing up the rear at 19%. I'd answer any questions that anyone may have regarding the budget. I don't have a lot of other calls at this time.
Do they pay us interest on the, on the police fees that aren't here? Do they pay us?
Doubt, yeah.
They would charge us interest if we didn't get them in in time.
With a penalty.
Right, the relationship is somewhat one-sided here, Lynn, that getting, you know, they want their money like this, but they tend to be reluctant to give it up. This is a new system issue.
Yeah, it's, it's only dealing with police fines. Any other state funds are coming in, okay? It's just a new system that they've undertaken.
Perhaps our chief should go up and try and shake things up a little bit up there.
You can be the direction, I'll be glad to.
No other questions on the budget?
That's all I have tonight. Thank you all.
Excellent. We'll move forward to the mayor's report. I have actually very little to add to what you're seeing in front of you. I will tell you that the Virgin's partnership is actively working on the local option tax. In fact, Rennie Perry presented us with some new information last week, so that continues to roll, and that will probably, most likely, come up again in our meeting next week as we're discussing the charter amendment. So keep your eyes open for that.
Is it possible by then to maybe have a timetable that we could look at and try and...
By next week?
Well, yeah, by that meeting, just because we know, we know, we need the charter change, we need to vote.
We can, we can certainly have the timetable put together.
Yeah, I mean, I'm curious.
Yep. We can certainly have that. Anything else regarding local option? Any thoughts? The succession planning committee is actually meeting this Thursday, and the, from that meeting will come their charge, so you will see that at our next regular council meeting. They're pretty excited to get going. Any questions about that from anyone? Citizens' comments?
If I could, just two quick things, going back to the city manager's report. When you start getting into the LEMP, please keep me in the loop. I'd love to be able to be part of that and have the planning commission at your disposal for that as well. I guarantee you that the people in Orwell did not write that themselves. And then on the fee structure, the, before our previous zoning administrator retired, we were starting the process of looking at that and comparing, and I can work with Peter on that, and get in touch with regional planning and try to get a sense of what's going on there as well. So I'm happy to help with, with that and do some research and see if it works. Thank you very much for both of the questions. Anything else from anyone?
In that case?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Ten minutes. Good job, Mayor Fritz.